Welcome to the Daybreak with Jeff Slakie podcast. I'm so happy you found us. Please subscribe, rate, review, and share this with your circle of influence. It's a collection of the interviews, news, and conversation during Daybreak with Jeff Slakie on i Fiber One News Radio, KMAS, weekdays from six to nine.
A good Friday morning to you. It's the fourth of September. We are on the precipice of Labor Day weekend. My gosh, good morning Spencer. How are you doing bud?
I'm all right. I just can't believe it's September. Can't believe Labor Day is coming up.
Well, coming up on the show today, we are going to talk with Dr. Alex Apostle about the first day, the first couple of days of school. Unbelievable. Also Mason County EDC Executive Director Jennifer Beria and Mason County Commissioner Sharon Trask update us on the work the county and EDC have done with the grants that have come into our community that have helped out a lot of businesses. And you know, in the interview, we talked about that it was, you know, March thirteenth or something like that, that the county got the order and it happened to be Commissioner Trask's birthday. So she's going to obviously remember that. But now here we are, beginning of September. And you would have thought that by this time, time would have slowed to almost a crawl, but it still moves at a fast clip.
It really does. Things are flying by. Since the last release, Mason County Public Health was notified of four additional Mason County residents that tested positive for COVID-19, bringing the total to 353 positive cases in Mason County. Mason County staff are performing case investigations and tracing close contacts to reduce the spread of COVID-19 in the community. And remember, if you're showing symptoms, early testing is encouraged. At the earliest signs of symptoms, please reach out to the Respiratory Illness Triage Line at three six zero four two seven three six one five. And they can assist you in scheduling an appointment at Mason Health's drive-through COVID-19 testing.
I tell you, I got the memory of a rock because I got busted twice at least in the last couple of days.
Oh no.
Heading from the radio station. Well, I got from heading from the radio station to head home. I always, most always head back out the city center exit towards the Matlock interchange. And, and for the last couple of days, the, the, that whole on-ramp, off-ramp area has been closed.
Yeah, that's hard at the car lot too.
It's been hard. I was just wondering about that. You must've just been all sorts of messed up. So the ramps are back open.
Yes, thank goodness.
Yay for that. They had been doing a lot of work. Of course, this is all around the Coffee Creek and the Culvert and Goldsboro Creek and the repositioning of that when we had Doug Adamson on from Washtod on a, you know, a couple of weeks back. Just know that now, today, as we get ready for the Friday and the long weekend, that those ramps are working right now.
Fantastic. A man suspected of fatally shooting a supporter of a right-wing group in Portland, Oregon last week was killed late yesterday as a fugitive task force tried to arrest him in Lacey. The U.S. Marshal Service said today that forty-eight-year-old Michael Forrest Reinhold was killed as a federal task force attempted an arrest. Authority Reinhold was suspect in the killing of thirty-nine-year-old Aaron J. Danielson, who was fatally shot Saturday night. Thurston County Sheriff's Lieutenant Ray Brady says four members of the task force fired their weapons, including members from local city police and county sheriff's departments.
Sunday, again, a reminder at two, two protests, rallies are planned for Shelton. One, a Black Lives Matter rally is planned, two o'clock on Sunday. Same time, same day, a Back the Blue rally is planned, less than a block away at the intersection of First Street and Railroad Avenue. So according to the Shelton Mason County Chamber of Commerce, and yesterday I sat in on their State of the Community webinar, and they again reiterated this, Police Chief Moody has been in a constant contact with the chamber, looking at this, talking with other folks. People are going to be coming in, other law enforcement agencies to help kind of monitor the situation. But business owners may want to consider closing their businesses on Sunday afternoon. There could be large crowds brought on by these two groups. He notes that he has no reason to believe property damage will occur. Probably not a bad idea though, to pack away any valuables, make sure doors and windows are locked. There will be extra officers and patrols going on. He did caution and remind everyone that everybody has a constitutional right and the right to exercise those rights in peaceful manners. So that's happening again Sunday at two in downtown Shelton.
And Monday is Labor Day. It's hard to believe. It doesn't feel like a normal three-day pre-COVID weekend. Those are, people used to look forward to three-day weekends. Now it's just kind of one long stretch of time. But most government, most government offices will be closed for the holiday. Please check your local municipality website for localized closures. Though they may vary from county to county.
Well, the Seahawks bringing back wide receiver Josh Gordon on a one-year deal, even as the talented pass catcher awaits reinstatement by the NFL after his latest suspension for violating the league's drug policy. Gordon signing confirmed by Twitter, but from his agent early yesterday and then announced by the team. Gordon was suspended indefinitely by the NFL last December for testing positive for performance enhancers and substances of abuse, the league said in a statement at the time. We do have plans for the Mariners. We're doing some of our final audio tests into next week. And we'll start to get some of that Seahawk football on the air. And that'll be a heck of a lot of fun. Mariners are finally coming back after a little bit of a problem. The three games against the Athletics had been canceled. The A's were being tested for coronavirus as there was some reports of some out, some, some of that. So as I rustle my papers, you'd think I'd have this ready to go here on a Friday morning. But the Mariners are back on the air against the Texas Rangers, five o'clock pregame and six ten first pitch. And a big thank to our super sports sponsors, Ascend Roofing, PUD number three, Arch Mechanical, and The Roof Doctor for helping us get the Mariners on this season. Again, who's on the show again today?
We got Dr. Alex Apostle from the Shelton School District and Jennifer Beria from the EDC with Mason County Commissioner Sharon Trask and all that and more coming up today on a Friday Daybreak.
From the i Fiber One News Radio Studios, you're listening to Daybreak.
Well, good Friday morning here on the Daybreak Show. We've got Dr. Alex Apostle on the phone line. And good morning, Alex.
Good morning, Jeff. What a beautiful day.
Busy week and beautiful day here. Wednesday was the start of school in the Shelton School District. And it's a whole new look as the curriculum comes from K-12. What can you tell me about some reports you heard in from the first day?
Well, I took a little tour of the district yesterday and it was a little eerie not seeing the yellow buses and seeing a lot of our students running around. But all reports indicate that we had a wonderful opening. Thanks to our parents and families for sticking with us and our teachers doing such a great job on a very first day of school. I'm very, very happy with what the results are. Based on the first day, we had very good numbers registered and ready to go. I just can't thank our, our families and parents enough for sticking with us. And our teachers for facing the challenge in terms of online learning and teaching. And they did a fantastic job. And my message to principals and assistant principals and administrators last night at about four thirty, we had a meeting was that, you know, we just build from here and keep going and do the very best for our kids and for our families. And we're set to do that.
Last week, we were talking a little bit about some announcements that had just started to be coming out of the governor's office in regards to bus transportation and workers in that regard. Have you learned any more about that?
Sure. And we're working on that as we speak. The board and I are meeting at four thirty today in a study session to talk about how the proclamation from the governor regarding the transportation budget will affect us. But we're going to do everything possible to bring people back to work when we can in a very responsible manner. But you know, things are looking better and hopefully we can bring people back to work. That's, that's what our, our mission is. That's what our goal is.
What are some of your short-term and middle-range metric goals that are, that would lead you to believe that this will be a successful model through the year? Or at least until we can reevaluate the reopening of school?
Well, one thing, Jeff, is that we're, we're preparing for whatever comes down the road, whether it's staying in the online model and dealing with special circumstances that families and students may have. But we're also gearing up for the hybrid model, if that's what we want to call it, where there'll be some face-to-face with students. And then we'll still have students probably that are interested in staying online. But we're, we're preparing for a successful year regardless of what the challenges and circumstances are. And I'm, I'm very proud of our community. I'm proud, very proud of our teachers and administrators, our principals, assistant principals. They're, they're doing a great job. They've been doing that, doing that for months now. And it paid off big dividends on the first day of school. So what we want to do is even do better to provide quality education for our students and for our families. And we're striving to continue to improve each and every day. That's, that's the goal, that we improve continuously.
You know, when you're talking about some students may like the, keep with the online model, some like to go in. Have you thought at all about adjusting the different high schools in the Shelton School District to maybe be, one of them would be the in-learning? If, if appropriate and available, Shelton perhaps, Choice could be hybrid and then Cedar would be an online? And that's, could that be a way that you look at things? Or do they, is it important that all three schools have that separate identity?
Well, I think everything's on the table as we move forward. Of course, we've got a lot of things going on. We're talking about, of course, the, a new academy, the Med Academy, manufacturing or engineering and technology that we're moving forward on, that will be ready to go by the fall of 2021. That's going to add some excitement to how we approach education. Of course, Cedar High School and Choice are, and Shelton High School. I mean, everything is on the table and we will make adjustments that meet the needs of our students. What we're trying to do is create as many opportunities for learning as possible for our kids. That's, that's what it's all about. And so whatever it takes to meet their needs, that's what we're going to do.
What kind of conversations are you able to have with State Superintendent Reichdahl, either one-on-one or through a meeting or group situation to kind of keep him updated on what's going on and whether or not this continues to work?
Yes. Very good question. We work through Dana Anderson, our ESD one thirteen. That's our conduit to Chris Reichdahl. And Dana does a great job communicating with us from, in terms of what Superintendent Reichdahl is talking about. And then we reciprocate, of course, all the way around. But our ESD one thirteen is the key conduit to Chris Reichdahl.
Shelton School District Superintendent Dr. Alex Apostle, at the end of an exciting and difficult week, but it looks like everything is starting to move forward. And before too long, the kids should be settled in. Well, good talking with you this morning and have a good weekend and we'll check in next week.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Nice talking with you as always.
You're listening to Daybreak on i Fiber One News Radio.
Well, good morning, everybody. Jeff Slakie and Spencer Hughes here on the Daybreak Show. And I'm happy to have in studio via Zoom video conference, because that's how we do things these days, Mason County Commissioner Sharon Trask and from the Economic Development Council, Jennifer Beria. Good morning to you both. How you doing?
Morning. Thanks for having me in the studio. I'll put it in air quotes.
Yeah, the studio. Here we go. Sharon, it's you. It's been a while.
No, it has been. Yeah. This is my second year, so.
County has been very busy with the help of the EDC dispersing a lot of grant monies that have been allocated, not only from the state, but there's a lot of other monies that are out there. So I thought we'd have you on today to kind of just talk about this process, where we're at now in the delivery of those grants to businesses all across the county? And what more we have maybe down the pike for other businesses?
That would be great. That we could not do this without the EDC. They, they're a vital component. And they have such a passion for Mason County. We, we sure appreciate them.
Yeah, they have worked real.
County. They, they're giving us the money to give out to the businesses, so.
Well, and Jennifer, you and Karen have the kind of, some of the, the more rewarding portions of this as you go to the places and deliver those checks. But it is the county commissioners that have helped go through the applications that you have kind of helped to get from folks. And Sharon, just talk to me a little bit about, I mean, obviously there's privacy concerns. So we're not going to be naming businesses or people, but just some of the stories that you may have read or the other commissioners had read about just the impact of the virus in Mason County.
I know. It's hit our businesses hard. I think, so it was March thirteenth, which happened to be my birthday. That's when everything got shut down. And so that's one date that'll live with me for, well, for quite a while.
Right.
And so the businesses, I remember driving down the road and just seeing the businesses close. Nobody in the, nobody on the streets. Everybody was, was at home trying to stay safe and following the, the governor's orders. And then, and then we started getting funding or additional ways to help our people, to help our businesses. And that's when we brought in the EDC. They have, I feel like, whoops, I feel like they are, they're, they're a key element. And we couldn't have done it without them.
Jennifer, talk to me a little bit about that partnership that you have with the county commissioners who represent three distinct districts within the county. But under certain guidelines, you know, for certain loans or for certain grants, you had to be in business over a year, or you had to have so many employees and things like that. So those kind of things worked across the whole of the county. And talk to me a little bit how you guys worked with the commissioners to start releasing some of those funds.
I think that's what makes the partnership work is we're, we're mandated by our state statute that, that brings us into existence to help any and all businesses within Mason County, regardless of whether or not they're a membership. If you are based in Mason County, if you're a citizen in Mason County, we are here to help you. So that partnership really works because we don't have those limitations. So being able to reach out to a business in Lillywop as opposed to a business in Camilchi and even into Huya, all of those different places have different needs. They have different customers. They've got different setups that they have. So being able to talk with them about the different funding opportunities, like you were saying, we've got multiple funding opportunities out there. Department of Commerce has released funds at the, I'll put it in quotes, at the beginning, it was about two months after the shutdown happened of funding that was from the Strategic Reserve Fund. That kind of stock gapped until CARES was able to be passed. As quickly as things have been moving in government, you hear that a lot, you know, everybody's moving so fast. It's still not fast enough to help mitigate the impact that we have to our businesses. So being able to talk with those businesses about upcoming opportunities, having them be ready to put in their application, having their financials in order to prove that there is an impact from COVID, all funding sources are requiring that. So you have to show that, you know, even if it's a loss in revenue, it used, I made this last year and this is what I've made from being shut down, which is, I mean, we've had plenty of businesses say, how do I show on a profit and loss statement a zero income? Well, you make sure that it just says zero where it is. If you were shut down the entire month of April, you're not going to have any revenues that had come in. So being able to work with them so that they're ready for that. And when the county received their, their CARES funding, being able to say to the county, we've already gone through multiple application processes. We have an idea of businesses that you can immediately get this funding out to, that you don't have to then put in even more laborious application process as they might require something else. Since it's attached to Commerce, those requirements are the same. So we are able to get that funding out quicker. So the, the three hundred thousand that we, thank you, thank you, thank you to the county for allocating to small businesses. We end up just being a pass-through for being able to say that, you know, if the business meets these needs, meets these COVID impact requirements, you're eligible for up to ten thousand based on what your need is. We can get that funding out, out faster.
I had read that at least nationwide, folks are thinking maybe one in six small businesses won't come out of this. And maybe even it's even a higher number at this point. But when I, when I'm, when I'm thinking about this right now, the, the amount of time, March thirteenth to now September, that's, you know, five and a half months or so. And we do know that the pace of the delivery of the, of the monies was slower than what I think a lot of folks wanted, which is, and that's what happens.
Right. You want immediate help. When an emergency happens, you want immediate help, but it, it just doesn't move like that.
But in, in the case, in this case, it seemed as though everybody who the businesses would be paying for their bills and rent or whatnot, all were under the same understanding that this is happening to everybody. I mean, or were people saying, listen, I'm not going to pay my rent, but I am applying for this. So please bear with me. Are those the types of conversations that businesses were having? Do you know?
You had a lot of those conversations landlords working with businesses to say, you know, let's, let's keep track of, of where it is and we can pay it distributed over the next few years if it ends up accumulating that much. You see that with insurance companies, with utilities. All the conversations are, or have been, you're, we're not going to turn your power off. We're not going to shut you down. And we're going to work with you to be able to pay that back, that back amount owed. I know that the county is working with our utility distributors to potentially use additional funds from CARES to pay some of that back. So if that gets paid back, then, then those individuals and those businesses are going to start from a fresh point moving forward. I know the insurance companies are saying, you know, we're, we're going to work with you. So reach out, talk with us. As much as we've automated the, the process of paying bills, there's still people behind that. And, and you're definitely seeing the support from those people and just saying, you know, how can, how can we get through this so that we can get back to a place? But you're right, you are going to see businesses that are going to shut from this, whether or not they've decided it's too much hassle to work through the regulations that are happening or their, their customers haven't come back. We are going to see business closure impacts from that.
Commissioner Trask, talk to me a little bit more about some of the conversations that you're having and hearing with the state in regards to further monies that are available and perhaps coming, coming down the line.
So we just got notice that, that the governor is going to release more money. And so each county should receive a minimum of three hundred thousand and the city should receive a minimum of thirty thousand. And, and also, which is huge, our health departments, they'll get additional monies because our nurses, they are, they're working twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
And trying to, to do what they're required to do. And so they got a little, they're giving us more help.
Yeah, more help coming for them. So if, if these, if this money is, is coming in, let's just say it's three hundred thousand dollars additionally for the county. How would that, would that go then as another grant opportunity through you, Jennifer, and the EDC? Or is this going to be earmarked as, as needed to keep the county going?
Well, let me tell you. So, so far in the county, the total expenses for COVID is one point five million.
Okay.
And that is, that's payroll. So anything that, that was not regular or in our general fund. So your, your overtime hours, the PPE, things like that. Those are those additional expenses. And so some of this CARES money is helping with that as well. Plus you also have other requirements too. So we have to expand the, the courtrooms because you have to have the, meet the, the six-foot restrictions, you know, and have PPE for them.
Right.
And so we're, meeting all of those restrictions is, is, I don't.
It's expensive.
It is. It is. And I don't think that everybody, that it was realized at the top how much it would cost all of the smaller counties. The, the larger counties were able to, they already have big rooms.
Right.
Our commission chambers is very tiny. Our courtrooms are very tiny. And most of the rural counties are in the same boat. So a lot of this money is going to help us meet the restrictions.
And you would, you would hope, you would hope that down the road sooner than later, this is where the feds should help backfill some of this, right? Because if, if cities and counties and states can't run deficit, but the feds can and, and we're looking, you know, conservatively right now at a million and a half just on the COVID stuff. That's a lot of money that not only Mason, but everybody is going to have to try to figure out.
Right, right. And then there's also the lost revenue. So so far, we're not, you're not allowed to make up for lost revenue. That's not something that, that Commerce or the state has been approved to, to allow the counties or cities to do. So there's a lot of people that are, a lot of counties and cities that are in a deficit.
Yeah. And it's only going to probably get worse as the year goes on. I mean, when do you, when do you, you guys have started, you're starting your budget conversations, right, for next year already, right?
We are. We received that today. And we'll start doing our, or having our little meetings with the, the other departments in October.
Is there, is there a time where the commissioners across the state would band together and say, listen, we can't, we can't do this. We don't have the money. We're going to be cutting these very important roles and, and rules. We know that we can't run a deficit, but we can't cut this much from our budget. Is there, is there any, any way that this county's, and I know it's not the governor necessarily, but it's the feds, you know, at what point will the federal government listen?
We're hoping.
Well, that's a loaded question.
Going to leave that right there for you.
We are meeting though. Every, every week, all the counties get together. And, and we talk about our finances and where we're sitting. And Commerce is a part of that conversation as well. So the state of Washington is, I feel, I feel that we're lucky that we can work as a team. We've got great people at the state level, great people at the city level. And we're all working together, trying to make this all work, trying to help our people and hopefully not get further in debt.
Well, one great way that you have been helping is by releasing a ton of money from a one-person business up to twenty employees, from Matlock to Lillywop. There's places all over the county that have benefited by these grant monies. There are more on the way. And there's not like an alert, Jennifer, that somebody can get once an application is open to fill out? Or do they just keep checking the website or?
You could set up Google Alerts and have it, and have it alert you anytime something changes that, that's set up for that. But we've, after the first time we put up an application and we got, well, where is it? Even though it said grants right down here, it will now be front and center, big page. That's how we've, that's how we've launched every other grant opportunity that we had. Giant icon in the middle of the page, the grant. Click on it and all of the, all the information will be listed there.
And there's the confusion in the beginning that it was a loan.
Sure.
And it's, and there's a lot of programs that you still can go the loan route. So we've, we've tried anything that's not a loan to call it a grant. Terminology came out with a forgivable loan, which is essentially a grant. You just are wording it differently because you're requiring something on the backend.
Sure.
But.
Well, businesses.
Stop that nonsense.
Businesses all throughout the county, please, please go to choosemason.com. Whether or not you're a member of the EDC, you don't have to be a chamber member. You don't have to, just, you are in the county and the EDC is in the county.
You are a business.
Yep. Jennifer and Karen are there to help. So choosemason.com has got all the links. Commissioner Trask, good to see you.
You too.
Thanks for having us.
Tell those fellow commissioners, they're doing a great job and tell them hello for me too. All right, y'all. Good to see you. Good information. And we will get all the information and links to whatever anybody needs to in the show notes. All right? the information and links to whatever anybody needs to in the show notes, all right?
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Jeff.
From the iFiber One News Radio Studios, you're listening to Daybreak.
Well, good Friday morning to you. It's the 4th of September. Again, unbelievable. And Labor Day weekend is upon us, and traditionally that has meant, oh, gosh, just one of the best weekends in downtown Olympia. Harbor Days, of course, a scaled-down now virtual Olympia Harbor Days event is happening this weekend. Working within the state coronavirus health guidelines, the South Sound Maritime Heritage Association developed a scaled-down version of Harbor Days. Well, they want to continue this 47-year-long Harbor Day legacy. They, of course, also understand the need for a safe and secure event space. So we're presenting, they say, a virtual event with safe-at-home community participation activities, Olympia Harbor Days Lite, keeping our transitional tugboat heritage theme while using online digital media content and other ways to provide family-friendly activities. So here's some of the things that you can check out. There are still self-guided tours along the Percival Landing Boardwalk, but please make sure social distancing and masks are being worn. There are links to a decade of Olympia Harbor Day videos of the tugboats, the races, and that's always a heck of a lot of fun. There's also a Lego tugboat build-at-home challenge with an instructional video, and anybody can do this now because it's all online, which is awesome. Harbor Days at Home, encouraging maritime displays in neighborhoods. That one, kind of a fun one. There's a lot of other things, some stay-safe activities by the Puget Sound Estuaryum, the Estuary Beach Quest, there's Crab Bingo, and all sorts of things available for purchase, too, on the website, harbordays.com. You can also go to maritimeoli.org and facebook.com/olympiaharbordays starting tomorrow. So tough to not have Harbor Days. It's always a fun time to go see all those beautiful tugs. If you do go downtown, make sure you're just distanced and masked. And I think it's going to be a pretty nice weekend for this, too. So cool thing to do, tough, though, in the age of the virus. More Daybreak Show coming up. Good morning to you. Thank you so much for listening to today's Daybreak with Jeff Slakey podcast. Again, I'm so happy and honored you found us and chose to listen. Please subscribe, rate, review, and share this with your circle of influence. It's a collection of some of the interviews, news, and conversation during Daybreak with Jeff Slakey on iFiber One News Radio, KMAS, weekdays from 6 to 9. Thank you so much again, and talk with you next time.